Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell. Councilman Stamey. Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burr.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge prayer. Let's not forget about Councilman Stamey also in our prayer tonight. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings. And Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve you and to serve the citizens of Clinton. Thank you for your strength this day. God, I ask now for wisdom as we conduct business. I pray, God, that your word says that if we lack wisdom, if we ask for it, you'll give it in abundance. And God, I do that. I thank you for these folks who are around us tonight. I pray for our city staff as they do their jobs each and every day. I pray for protection and safety for them and their family. And God, I do pray to renaii special prayer for E.T. and Rita as she tends to him and takes care of him. Father God, thank you for all you do for us, and we love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Jim. Before I forget, too, there will be a pancake breakfast for E.T. on this Saturday at the Apple Blossom from eight to 11:00. The tickets are $5 apiece. Again, if you could give more, that'd be great. And all that money is going towards renovating or remodeling his house to be more accessible when he gets back home to accommodate his needs. So, and I thank Jimmy, and I know Kelly, you've done a lot with that, too. I appreciate y'all's efforts. Do I hear a motion for the review and the approval of minutes of the previous meeting, December 17, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This time, we'll recognize visitors. Any grievances or appraises for the city? ASAP, you can come up. Please introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Rachel Miller, and I'm one of the new staff members at ASAP of Anderson. I'm the prevention coordinator, and I'll be attending y'all's meetings where foreseeable. So, I'm excited to be here.
Hi, I'm Kayla Simon, the new executive director for ASAP of Anderson. I was preceptor under Stephanie Strudner. So, I'm real excited to be here with y'all.
Now, where did Stephanie go?
Stephanie started her own business called Catalyst Evaluation Group. She's essentially an epidemiologist for hire and helps coalitions do epidemiological work without having to shovel out a full-time salary for an epidemiologist.
Great, cool, great. Welcome to Clinton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I couldn't hardly sleep last night because next to Christmas, next favorite thing I have looked forward to is the audit in the city of Clinton.
Oh, my gosh, you're right.
So, with that nice introduction, I usually say the best audit report I ever heard is under 10 minutes. So, I stick to that. No, well-
Yes, you have said that every year.
I'm hoping one day y'all listen to me.
And maybe I'll get to nine this year, so. I'm Ted Hoats with Pew CPAs, and Gary Mitchell is with me also. We conducted the audit for the city again this year. And first of all, I want to thank Gail, who's not here today. Gail and her staff are terrific to work with and work with Scott as well, and also very good to work with. So, we appreciate the cooperation we get for the audit. I'm going to start with the letter that we have. This is our audit communication letter, our governance letter. And are you following by hard copy or by PDF? Just by hard copy, okay. Right after the table of contents is page one. This is required communications. This letter basically is just that, required communications directly from an audit firm to a board or city council in this case. And the categories on the left describe what we're required to communicate, what our responsibilities are with regard to the audit, overview, plan, scope, and timing of the audit, accounting policies and practices. And then on page two, audit adjustments, uncorrected misstatements, disagreements with management, significant issues discussed with management, significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And there were no issues in any of these areas, so I do want to point that out. Right after that, letter communicating significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in internal control. If we had them, they would be in the very back of the audit report, and we'll talk about that section in a moment. But there were none. And material written communications really is attached at the end of this letter, which is basically a representation letter from management, management representation letter in conjunction with the audits. You see what they represented to us. On page three is the summary of significant accounting estimates. And this explains the three areas, including the third one being pension, where estimates are in place for numbers, and what the accounting policy is regarding them, how management has estimated that with the help of others, and our basis for conclusion. And nothing unusual or anything that we didn't agree with as far as what numbers were. And right after that is the actual representation letter. Any questions regarding the governance letter? If not, we'll continue with Christmas and go on to the big report. I'm going to skip all the way to page eight, nine, and 10, which will be several pages in. And this is the audit opinion. On the second page of that, on page nine, is the opinion. And we state in the first sentence there, really the end of the first line, that the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So, the significance of this is we're issuing a clean opinion, which is what you want and expect. So, these statements are fairly presented. On skipping ahead to page 22 starts the core financial statements for the city. And the statement of net position on 22 and the statement of activities, which starts, I believe, on page 24, are basically what your balance sheet and income statement on a four accrual basis. Now, for the most part, governments report on a modified accrual, which is closer to a cash receipts, cash disbursements basis. But this is a presentation showing your capital assets, your long-term debt, your pension obligation. So, it factors all that information in, as opposed to the budgetary basis, which we'll talk about in a minute. And on page 23 at the bottom, governmental activities, the first column, your net position's 23 million, so a healthy amount. One thing I do want to point out, governmental activities is the cities and the schools and the city's special revenue funds. Business-type activities really is primarily Clinton Utilities Board, CUB. So, it's required to be shown in here as a component unit. But, you know, what the city controls here is the governmental activities. And that's the general fund, school fund, and special revenue funds. Statement of activities is on page 24. And you'll see from a four accrual perspective, total expenses for governmental activities is in the first column, the first underlying area, it's about 21 million. That includes depreciation. And then, in the very first column, it goes all the way down the page, about halfway in the middle of the page, governmental activities on the change in net position line near the bottom has a $4.9 million to the good. So, a good number. Your net position, again, as I said earlier, is about 23 million. Of course, that's on a four accrual basis. Now, we'll turn to page 25, and we will look at the balance sheet for the governmental funds. The first two columns are significant. That's the general fund and then the general purpose school fund. Fund balance levels are 9.6 million for the general fund, the very second-to-last number on that page in the first column, of which important number there also is unassigned, 4,571,000. Then for the schools, the important number there is your education. Assigned for education is 5,669,000. So, both are in good position. General fund in particular, I want, how fund balances is really analyzed at the state level is your unassigned fund balance compared to what your total obligations are for the year, which really is defined on the next page, on page 27. Typically, you would show, you compare it to total expenditures, which in the general fund is 12.3 million. If you look under the expenditures, the first subtotal, 12,301,799. You would then add transfers out, a few lines below that, 685,000. So, your total obligations are about 13 million, 12,986,799, if you add those together. If you compare the unassigned balance of 4.5 million in the near 13 million of obligations, basically, it calculates out to a little over a four-month reserve. So, from a reserve perspective, the state requires in the range of a minimum of one to two months, and you're a little bit over four months, and you're in healthy position from a general fund perspective. You'll also notice on page 27 that net changes in fund balances basically is excess revenues over expenses, 1.8 million for general fund, 600,000 for a school fund. Probably a better place to look is on page 29 for the general fund, because this is your budget actual comparison. Same numbers as the prior page that we looked at. But you'll be able to take a look at original budget, final budget, actual numbers, and the variance. Again, net excess was 1.8 million. So, a good year, and you can see where that stood from a revenues and expenses compared to budget. Primarily, that excess is coming from revenues being over budgeted amounts. And on page 30 is where the schools are presented. Same format, and again, the net excess is about 600,000. Most of that came from savings or expenses being under budgeted amounts. We mentioned other funds that the city controls. They're outlined on page 130. These are your special revenue funds, includes the federal projects fund, cafeteria fund, internal school fund, drug enforcement fund, and school capital projects funds. All fund balances there are positive, which is what you would want to see. And grants, federal and state grants are outlined on page 136 and 137. Your total federal awards were about 1.9 million, and that, of course, in this report includes city and schools, along with state funding of 700,000. Total federal and state awards for the city and the school system, city-school system, was 2.6 million. We are required to test grants if you're over 750,000. So, we ended up testing two grants, and that was, they're identified on page 175. We did not have any findings in testing those grants, so that's a good thing. And as well, one of the grants we tested is the ESAR grant. And testing that grant is complicated because so new. It's not like it's an established program, and the guidance on that is moving. But we were able to test that with no exceptions. Our reports regarding the grants are immediately before that, pages 171 through 174. And as mentioned in the governance letter, the first report also includes our testing of compliance with laws and regulations and controls over financial reporting. We did not have any written exceptions for that. We always have some minor comments that we provide, city finance, nothing to a written nature. Again, as I said earlier, Gail is really, is exceptional to work with. And she does the draft of the report. We review and make, you know, come up with suggestions for edits and so forth. But they're relatively minor. Gail's always done an excellent job with drafting the report and keeping the numbers straight. Went through it pretty quickly. I know sometimes we're asked about where we stand on pensions from a city pension number. And schedules on the pension are, I want to say they're around 120, really starting in the section of 113 through 128 is information about the pensions. And the city pensions are in good shape. They're in the state plan, and the state plan's pretty funded. CUB has a net pension liability, but overall is in healthy shape.
Archie's retiring in a couple of months. We're going to take a big hit here shortly. Let me increase that.
He would probably be okay with that.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I got one.
Yes.
There's somewhere, and I've looked, and I don't know the terms, the city's debt.
Yes.
Is there not a schedule in here that shows those debts? And where's that at?
Yes, there is. Let me grab the report copy.
There you go. I'm anxious for that to get close to zero.
It's getting better. Page 64 has some detail on it, but then there's also additional detail in the supplemental section.
Okay, where's the supplemental stuff at? Because it would break it down even.
Yes.
It has even dates and so forth on it, doesn't it?
Correct, it does. In the 150s. 160, 140? Oh, 140 is.
One page, 140?
Yes. Just over there. Yes, 140. And then also 141.
So, from a governmental side?
Yes. The governmental side would-
Would be the city.
Correct.
And is that 1.8? Is that what that is? Is that a total?
There is.
Under the column outstanding, July 1, 2020?
That was the beginning of the year for loans payable. At the end of the year-
Oh, I see, 1.5.
Yes, that's the end of the year. But you also had bonds payable of 3.8 and notes payable of 1.2.
Oh, okay. So, right now, like, for instance, just to make sure I understand, that fire apparatus vehicle, that loan was issued January 8th. It's scheduled to mature January 1 of 2026. It started out with a $426,000 balance. 65,000 was paid, and there's an outstanding balance as of June 30 of 361. Am I reading that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
That's correct. And like you noted, there is a last maturity date if you stay on the maturity schedule for each of those debts, ranging from 2024 through 2029.
And as far as interest rates and things, I mean, there's a couple on there that's 0.75%. That's pretty cheap money, but there's some 4%. And is that something that should be, I mean, I don't even, I know what's interest rates now? I mean, is that something that needs to be looked at?
Interest rates certainly are lower than that. And on governmental funds, they are certainly lower than that.
But we're pretty, but we're pretty close to getting that one paid off.
Yes, that's going to be the question.
Is the closing cost or the expenses to refinance outweigh the lower?
Correct. If we were 10 years out, you would definitely want to refinance that.
Right. But since we're so close.
It's probably, you can always run the numbers, but it's probably, probably would not be beneficial because of that.
We're probably not paying much on interest, are we? If it's seen like a regular loan, because your interest is kind of front-loaded.
Yes.
Another thing we could do is pay more toward the debt, too. Okay, that's a good page. Thank you, sir.
Yes, and that's, good chance that's the better option at this point, just because of how close you are.
Yeah, okay.
If you're able to, you might be able to pay more of that off. And if you wanted to pay any of them quicker, obviously, the one that 4% is probably where you want to look.
Do the 4% first, yeah, exactly.
The 0.75, not a bad deal. Wish I could get that.
One question we ask on a regular basis, is there anything that concerns you at all, that we need to keep our eye on from a numbers standpoint, trend standpoint?
The current numbers and trends are very positive. You know, your primary funds were operating in the black, so to speak, had revenues greater than expenses. City debt obviously is rather low for an entity your size. And the pension, the pension's often an area that people can get surprised by. But being in the TCRS system from the city side, you're well-funded in those, with those obligations. So, there's no hanging large debt out there, at least at this stage. We'll see what happens as we look at numbers next year with investment rates going in the wrong direction. But they're in good shape right now.
I got one more question.
Sure.
Under bonds payable, general obligation refunding series 2013, is that where we borrowed the money when we found out we owed school and places we didn't think we owed?
Uh, that was before then. That might be. Probably a question we need to ask you.
Okay. Because that was $8 million, almost nine. I bet that was it.
We might have refinanced during that time, too.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I was teasing you earlier. I mean, Jim and Larry and I were here at a time where these are very painful. And now, it's good to be boring. Boring's good. I don't say you're boring, but I'm just saying, good reports, you know, it's good, you know?
When you give an audit report and there's no television cameras in the back of the room, that's a pretty good sign.
Yeah. I mean, we went, it was a couple of hours. I mean, it was, it was long and tedious, so. But appreciate, great partnership we had with you guys and did a great job.
Well, we appreciate the chance to serve. And I like to give boring reports only from the standpoint, you know, going over numbers that are tough and unpleasant is just not a good experience for anybody.
That's right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Rob texted me. He's not feeling well, so he's staying home. So, he did ask me to pick up his check, though, so. There's hope.
He's not tardy, he's absent.
Yeah, he's absent for this, but I'll take his check home, Tim, I'm sure. I've got some board and commission appointments that I've been putting off for, since December. And I have a couple here. One thing we had, what I was looking at is kind of freshening some boards up. One thing I realized being on planning commission is it's, you know, one thing I looked at, so we don't have, we need more of a balance of experience. And, you know, I think it's really important to have some, a developer or contractor or somebody from that side from a contract standpoint, which really balanced out that board very nicely. And I think there's some boards, too, that need a councilman on there, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page moving forward. So, that's, I mean, you kind of look and see who I put on some things, you know, keep that stuff, keep those points in mind. First of all, the Clinton Port Authority, Nancy Harper's term ended December 31, 2021. And I would like to appoint her, reappoint her to that position, term ending December 31, 2031. You know, that sounds like a long time. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under Clinton Housing Authority, Wim Schutman's term is off of December 31, 2021. I'd like to place Lincoln Barton in that, in that open position, term ending December 31, 2026. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The Interstate County Industrial Development Association, Alan Tadlock, myself, and Roger Howks, term up is a four-year term. I'd like to reappoint, term ending November 30, 2025. Hear a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Lincoln Barton, term was up with the Community Action Commission. I'd like to, I'd like to appoint Ashley Purdy to that term, a term ending December 31, 2022. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Clinton Recreation Advisory Board, Alvin Taylor and Jennifer Fletcher's terms both is up. I'd like to reappoint them to a two-year term, term ending December 31, 2023. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Clinton Citizens Advisory Committee, Roger, is this one committee we're still looking at? If we're going to keep or not? Do we need to, I'll just need to skip that and just keep that open right now? I'll just, yeah.
What's the name of it again?
It's the Clinton Citizens Advisory Committee. I don't think, I don't think they've ever met.
Was that the one Jerry Shattuck was on?
No.
No. Clark Felser, John Miller, Jermaine, Bear Hutchins, Mary Lynn.
Yeah, so we'll wait on that. On Clinton Board of Housing Appeals, Randy Page, of course, passed away a few months ago. I'd like to appoint his son Buddy Page for a three-year term, term ending December 31, 2024. Hear a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Also, I'd like to reappoint, again, this is another one I don't think's ever met. It's required, okay. So, I'd like to reappoint Lori Hutchins, Laura Roberts, Ceni Gillum, and Jason Brown. That's a good foursome right there. Term ending December 31, 2024. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. As far as historic zoning, had Pam Rainey, her term ended December 31, 2021. I'd like to appoint Steve Heatherly to that term, term ending December 31, 2026. Hear a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Also, Dudley Bosick's term is up, December 31, 2021. I'd like to appoint myself to that position, a five-year term, ending December 31, 2026. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have some thoughts. I just, I just disagree with, with those, well, actually, both of those appointments. But historic committee is doing, I think, a good job. I've attended a couple of their meetings. And I hope that, I mean, it's certainly the mayor's prerogative to make the appointments as he sees fit. But it's this body's duty to approve those and ratify those or disapprove as we see fit. You know, Dudley Bosick is my mother-in-law. I'll disclose that for what that's worth if those people think that I have a conflict of interest. But I feel like, and the mayor makes comments about needing the right type- when the mayor makes comments about needing the right type of people on these, on these boards, she's the only one I know of that owns a historic building and has property in the historic zone. And that would make her, in my opinion, duly qualified to serve in that capacity. And so I, that's my thoughts on it.
Well, I must have misspoke. I didn't mean it as far as, I meant different backgrounds, different new energy, things like that. And Steve Heatherly does have a new building down, down on Market Street, too, but duly noted. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Motion passes. Also, I received a, a text today, and I'll read it to you, from, from Art Miller. And he, and I'll just read what he texted me, so. Said, Mayor, after much thought and prayers, I have decided to resign from the Historic Zoning Committee. I appreciate the opportunity. I have served in the past, in the past years. I wish the city and committee much success. Sincerely, Art Miller. So I certainly thank Art for his contribution. I tell you, Art's one of the finest people I know in the city, and I know he'll continue to serve in some capacity, so. I want to thank him for what he's done, not only for the historic, but, but all, just throughout his life. With that being said, I'd like to appoint Mary Hatmaker to the five-year term, term ending December 31st, 2030. Hear a motion for approval?
Shall move.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, thank you. Term ending December 31st, 2025. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Sorry to make the motion, just a second. Jim and Larry?
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. You know, one thing Roger or some of the staff can look into this, I've got two people for library board, and I think there should only be one person. I think that Jess, I think Jesse and Co took John's position on that. So if you just look into it, I, I think we've always had just one. We can, we probably need, we just probably need to verify that, because I don't, I don't remember that, but if you can look, I would appreciate it.
It's in the folder, yeah, it's on, it's in that, it's under miscellaneous, yeah.
Also, on planning commission, David McCoon's term is up, expired December 31st, 2021. I'd like to reappoint David to a five-year term, term ending December 31st, 2026. Hear a motion for approval?
Shall move.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And the last one, Melissa, how you pronounce her last name? I'm sorry, I'm just, but anyway, her term was up, and I'd like to appoint David Crowley for that position, term ending December 31st, 2026. Hear a motion for approval?
Second.
Having a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I, I, yes, I, I sense a trend. And, and it seems that you're replacing individuals that have been outspoken and showing concerns that, that hold opinions that you have said that you do not hold, so. It just looks like to me that you're removing individuals that, that you have disagreements with, and, and that's your prerogative. But I, I think she does a good job. I have found her to be well-prepared, well-thought, and I just don't see, I, I would stand in, in an opposition of removing her.
I, you know, you know, I don't necessarily agree with you. She's staying on historic. One thing I was talking about earlier is David Crowley just brings a whole different range of experience to, to that planning commission that we just don't have. He's, he's developed, he's, he's, he's been contractor, and I think it's very valuable to have that, that viewpoint on commission. I think the world of Melissa. I think she's a very intelligent woman. I still want her to be active. But, you know, I think we have two or three engineers already at the table, and I just thought it'd be nice to be able to be diverse in our planning commission. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. That's all I have. City School Board Report, Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. Just a couple of real quick updates with regards to Clinton City Schools. As we did close on Thursday and Friday, due to student and staff illness, we are happy to report that our numbers look much better today. We have popped back up, and our hope and prayer is that our spark we have seen and that we can continue to keep school doors open and school happening. A little follow-up on our, our, we'll go back to just how we're handling, right now we're in the middle of updating our health and safety plan. We're required by federal funds, the Esser grant that we receive, that we have to update that health and safety plan every six months. We are in the process of doing that, but just so the public knows, we are continuing to follow the Department of Health guidelines with regards to contact tracing. So we are currently, we have received another ELC grant. I'm not even going to begin to pronounce what that stands for, but basically we are now giving COVID tests free to staff and students within the schools. So we have added that as part of our health and safety plan. And then we are also contact tracing and following the current guidance, which now states that if you have been exposed to COVID, you do go home for five days. And so they've lowered that from 10 to 5. So we're just continuing to evolve as CDC and the Department of Health changes their, changes their guidelines. But we feel like that's been a key to our success in staying open. And so we want to continue to, to follow that guidance, and we appreciate all of the, the parents' help with that. I do want to make it real clear that there is a Tennessee state law that states that school systems do not have the authority to enforce a quarantine. So when we contact parents and let them know that their child has been exposed, and that the Department of Health guidelines state they should go out on a quarantine, if the parent chooses to not adhere to that CDC guidance, we have no legal authority to force them to do so. We are continuing to communicate those names and the information to the Health Department. The Health Department is following up and does have authority to do a lot more than, than we do. But we have gotten questions from parents who have heard about that law and want to know if we are following that law, and we are. But luckily, so far, our Clinton parents have been fabulous, and see, as inconvenient as it is, that's been one of the successes to keeping us open. So we have not had a lot of people deny what the, what the current guidance states. But in some good news about COVID and contact tracing and us keeping the school building open is the State Department today released a public media release of which I will forward to you all, but some very interesting results. Our, it's called the SAS platform, but it's where our student growth database is held. And they produced quite a few reports, and they came out with a new report this week where it was a quadrant. And what they did was they predicted where each district should perform or where they thought they would perform based on school closures and the learning loss associated with COVID. And so that was kind of your base, and then they scatter plotted all of the districts on that plot to see who did not achieve the projected growth and who exceeded the projected growth based on what they felt like would happen. And in that media release, I'm proud to report that Clinton City Schools was once again at the top of the scatter plot. We were among seven districts across the state out of 146 en masse that showed a far superior growth than what was projected in all of our grades. And we were one of nine districts in English and Language Arts out of 146 that showed a significantly above student growth than what was projected in all grades as well. So another piece of good news for Clinton City Schools, it was one of the hardest years we've ever lived through. But once again, our staff just continues to do whatever is needed to, to, to benefit our children. And then last, just a follow-up on the pancake breakfast for ET. We also have had some donors graciously donate the cost to cover T-shirts. And so we will be selling T-shirts at that event. It's going to say Blaze the House That ET Built. And then we also have some stickers. This is interesting. It has ET as a cartoon character that says Blaze the House That ET Built. And we'll be selling both of those things at the pancake breakfast on Friday. But renovations on his house are underway. We appreciate, I know that Rita wanted me to make sure to express appreciation to all of the community members and friends who have donated to help make this happen for him. ET is unaware that any of it is happening, so he's going to be in for a DASSA prize when he comes home from rehab. But we hope to see everyone there on Friday. Our Clinton Police Basketball Game and our Staff-Student Basketball Game, that both are going to be fundraisers for him, have been postponed until we can see some COVID numbers come down, but we hope to reschedule those soon.
Any questions? Any questions for Kelly?
Yes, it was postponed. Yeah. Yeah, but, but I'm not going to lie, I do have some police officers that are taking advantage of the gym to get some practice. And I have yet to hear from the Fire Department, Archie, but I suspect that I'll be hearing from them soon. They're, they're going to a secret location.
You have a pretty good record on these things, haven't you? The Fire Department pretty strong?
When the time comes, that is a game worth watching. It's, it's a tad bit competitive, as Roger will attest.
Roger's a nervous wreck when they play, I guarantee you. Yes, sir.
I'll, Dr. McBride asked about the debt. I think page 64 in your comprehensive report.
Right.
Gives you a really good summary of each loan and bond that we have for the city, as well as the school system. And it, I think it answers every question that you had.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you can reference that, it's footnote 11, Bonds, Notes, and Loans Payable.
Yeah, I got you, yeah, okay, thank you. Thanks, Scott, he's something else.
He got an advanced copy.
He is something else.
I tell you.
I don't care what the mayor says about you, man.
Thanks, buddy. Also, that's new in the, your financial statements, is they've brought in the internal school funds. That's new this year, it's never been done. So the internal school funds represents the activity for North, South, and Clinton Elementary as, as an individual school. And those are under the responsibility of the principal of each school. The Board of Ed funds that, the BP formula funds those accounts for individual schools. But this is the first year that the total of $70,000 in cash has been brought into your financial statements. So that's a little bit of a change, but that's, I digress, so now I'm going to get on, on target. You have before you a budget amendment, number four. My memo talks about the details of the budget amendment. That may be Gail's.
Oh, okay.
You scared me there, Brian. Budget amendment number four should be a memo from myself, dated January 13th. I'll just go over the highlights. We've increased expenditures by $228,000. This is funded by an increase in revenue of $55,000, and going into our reserve fund balance for the balance, $170,000. The big, the increase in revenue was a $50,000, $50,000 donation from a church that had closed. What was the name of the church?
Clinton Christian Church.
I think, is that where the Wendy's is? Donated $50,000. Some miscellaneous increases in expenses. And the biggest expenditure, single expenditure increases, HVAC equipment for South Clinton, $125,000. Kelly discussed briefly the epidemiology and laboratory capacity grant, the ELC grant. And that's a new federal program that we have, and that is in the budget amendment. That's for $158,000. And I've already had my COVID test done at the school. It's very convenient if you have something that resembles symptoms, and just go get tested. So I can attest to what a good program that is. Any other questions about the budget?
Any questions for Scott? Do you hear a motion for approval of budget amendment number four?
Shall move.
Having a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Stane, Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Yes, budget amendment number four passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann.
The Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning and Appeals both met on January 10th. The Board of Zoning and Appeals had no business, no new business, no deferred business. We did elect, basically retain the existing officers that were elected. The Regional Planning Commission also met that night. First matter of business, applicant city of Clinton requesting mandatory review of local parks and recreation grant for the property located at 304 Nave Street. This is the swim pool, and it is mandatory. And after discussion, the planning commission did, did give their review and recommendation to move on. And then secondly, city of Clinton requesting review of the actions of the Clinton Historic Zoning Commission. And this is, we got into discussion of their new guides, historical planning guides. And that became somewhat elongated, so it was moved that we defer this until next month, and that, that was passed. Also, we had a, we received a draft review of the cell phone tower, the cell tower ordinance, just basically to give us something to consider, no action taken. And the Planning Commission workshop, which was intended, was postponed due to the length of the consideration on the Historic Zoning Commission.
Any questions for Larry?
Yes, I, I have. In Title 14, Chapter 11 of the Historic Zoning Commission, 14-1103, the powers and duties of the Clinton Historic Zoning Commission, I, I repeat, powers and duties. So they have powers. Number two, to adopt design review guidelines for each classification of historic district established in the city, by which all projects subject to review in such historic districts are to be reviewed in order that the building official and/or Clinton Historic Zoning Commission may make a determination as to granting or denial of a certificate of appropriateness. The way I read that, it says this committee has the powers to adopt. It does, and I don't see, and I'm asking for point of procedure, where is it that, that that, that their actions have to be reviewed? Give me language, point me to where I'm missing, because I don't see it.
I think there was a great deal of discussion about and/or in that particular case.
Correct, but they adopted and they passed at a unanimous vote of five to zero to adopt new review guidelines. That subsequently was then referred to planning commission, and there were a great deal was made about how many pages it was. My question is, why is that before planning commission? Because what I just read indicates to me that the Historic Zoning Commission has the authority and the ability to adopt guidelines on their own without regard to any other body that I know of. Unless, I'm not seeing something, that's why I'm asking, and I'm sort of looking over at a particular person that can help me understand this.
Ordinance number 639, excuse me, that was adopted in March 25th, 2019, made several changes to the zoning ordinance. One of those included the, some work in the historic zoning section, which incorporated the design review guidelines as a part of the, as the code instead of a separate guideline document. When that was incorporated into the municipal code, then that puts it in the review process of any other portion that amends zoning. It goes to planning commission, planning commission recommends up or down to city council. So that change put the design review guidelines in ordinance format rather than just a policy.
Okay, asked and answered, thank you.
And that was during the time we were talking about housing on Market Street.
It was all in the same, in the same flow.
Ground level housing.
Correct. Thank you for answering my question, because I was confused.
Any other questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board Report?
Let me, before, before Zach gets there, let me just drop in. We did have the Martin Luther King Breakfast at Greenback. King Breakfast at Green Macadoo, and because of weather and illness and everything, it was, I guess you could say it was sparsely attended, but still a good group there and a good time. Again, I would, I would say to you that Adam Felk is doing a great job. It was really a, if we'd had better attendance, everybody'd be raving about it. I mean, for those of you missed it, you got pancakes, bacon, sausage, I mean, he gave you the whole deal, and some church time at the same time, so we'll celebrate it again next year, and we're looking at things to do for Juneteenth also.
Fantastic. Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Report.
I want to direct council's attention to, there's a slick in your packet, and it's about the virtual power plant savings. Jim probably is somewhat familiar with this. They look at what we pay, CUB pays TVA, is based off of like one hour a month of the highest use of electric, and so we have been able, through innovation and technology, to create a dynamic voltage regulation. Long story short, due to the leadership and foresight of CUB, we saved our ratepayers to date, and it went in two thousand and eleven, seven-point-seven million dollars that we did not have to pay TVA because of this program, and coupled with two other programs that they've developed to, for the last ten years, has saved the utility, well, saved the ratepayer, ten million dollars, and other utilities, they don't have this technology. And so, I think that's, you know, hats off, and I really wanted to highlight them, and I asked staff to put it into the report, because that's dollars and cents, that's what makes, you know, to me, is a brass tax. What makes a utility, you know, great, obviously reliable power and affordable power, but this technology that's looking after the ratepayer that CUB doesn't have, that Oak Ridge Utilities don't have, that our neighbors and friends throughout the valley, they do not have this technology. So, that's all I have.
Doing a great job, it's, that's a pretty impressive graph.
While we're talking about CUB, and I know I passed it to some of the last mayor, we were notified a couple of weeks ago that through some of the American Rescue Plan money, there was an addition of one-point-six million dollars that will be given to the city, that is strictly used for water and sewer, so that'll be a pass-through money through the city, that'll go to CUB for water and sewer improvements here in the city. So, we'll be working with Greg Fay, Greg Jones, and CUB on that money.
Is that it? Any questions for Zach?
Thanks, Zach. Might just, might just mention, for those people who were looking at the, at the board, Anderson County and CUB did a fantastic job of dealing with power outages when you look at Sevier County, Knox County, and counties around us. We were, we were far below them in any, any outages and shortages. I know there were some people that were, that did have problems, but compared to the counties around us, CUB was on top of it.
Yeah, thank you, I agree.
Thanks, Zach. Catherine?
Good evening, guys. I just wanted to give you some ending numbers for two thousand and twenty-one for our Main Street program. Within our first six months of being designated Main Street with the City of Clinton, we were able to do six events, and we, in our estimations on who attended those events, we believe we had twenty-four thousand and seven hundred people that came to our six events through July through December last year, and that doesn't include the Mosaic Festival, because we had not been designated yet, so we also went back and looked at all of our Facebook reach and promotions, and through all of the reaches of all of the posts that we did, we had one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven people that we reached through that. So, I just wanted to share with you that we feel like we're connecting with the city, and we're able to spread our net pretty wide. Some of that, the largest percentage is in Clinton, but we're also reaching Oak Ridge, Knoxville, and Powell pretty well with all of that. We were able to contribute thirteen thousand dollars to the welcome sign, if you see the landscaping out there. Ten thousand came from the Hollingsworth Foundation, and then Wade Scapes gave an additional in-kind donation of three thousand dollars, so if you pass by that, it looks great, and we're so thankful to both of those donations that we were able to receive, and we have eighteen thousand dollars more that we'll be doing in two thousand and twenty-two. We're working really hard in the next few months to get our walking tour finished. That's something that a lot of other Main Street programs do, and it was something that we felt was very important for us to do, because it's something that we can get people out walking around our city and see the dates and the history, because we have so much here in Clinton. So, that includes Academy Hill, the City of Clinton Field, Anderson County Courthouse, City Hall, the Train Depot, Green Macadoo, Terrapin Hill, Eagle Bend, and a few others, and they're all public in nature, and our hope is that some of our owners, either on Market Street, some of the privately owned buildings will also want to be a part of the walking tour. So, it's something that we'll create a map with, and we'll also have more additional information on our website, so we just hope that that's something that people enjoy as we get that completed. Our next event is April ninth, and it's the Mosaic Festival, and that's something that we did last year in partnership with both Anderson County and Clinton City Schools, and we're really excited to get that program started. We are working with a lot of the different entities within Clinton, because one thing I hear a lot is, there's just so much to do, how can I find it in one place? So, we're kind, we're working with the city, the Chamber, the Merchants Association, Green Macadoo, Clinton High School, all of the things that go on in the city to create one place where people can go see what's going on, including our events as well. We are doing a lot of promotion, we want to do some welcome packets for news businesses that welcome them to the historic district, but also let them know these are all the things that you have to do with the city as well, and that's something that Gail provided us a lot of information, so they kind of have a checklist with all the things that, so we can set them up for success as well. We've, the state announced that the facade grant is going to be available in May, so we're working hard to get that out to all the businesses who may want to participate in that, and we have, our board has already committed to over three thousand dollars worth of funds that we're going to put right back into the city with some cleanup dates that we're going to do probably right before the antique festivals, and so we can put out flowers, and we can do some fresh paint on doors, and just to make sure that everything is, looks as good as it can before some of our big events. And lastly, I just, we're working to highlight and promote the city just in general, so, you know, I thank you for the investment that you put into Main Street, and I hope that you are seeing that return on investment.
Okay. Any questions for Catherine? Catherine, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
City Manager Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. The North Charles G. Seaver Boulevard Traffic Signalization Improvement Project, which will include installation of a new traffic signal on North Charles G. Seaver Boulevard and Delrun Boulevard and Glen Alpine Drive, and one at Hillville Road at Tanner Lane, as well as replacing the signal controller in the existing signals, is scheduled for bid advertisement this week. This has been the project, I guess, we've been talking about for about a year and a half, had several people, as I think you all have had over the years, want that, so hopefully get it out to bid, probably still four to five, six months, once we bid it that, before installation will take place, but hopefully by summer, we'll have something going there.
And this is on, we have, we're funding this, right?
We're funding, I have talked to the county, county, a couple county commissioners up there, and the county mayor about possibility of helping with that cost, and they're open to it, they have not taken it to full commission yet, so once we get the bids in and get some exact pricing, I'll go back to approach them with that.
What, where you think the timeframe is for now and install, roughly?
Six months.
If material's available, that's the problem.
Six months, minimum?
Yeah, if we go with the mast arms, probably take a little longer, they're, they're look better, but they don't produce those to actually order them, so we don't know how long it'll take.
Okay.
In accordance with the previous approved practices of council, I respectfully request authorization to file various grants, apply for various grant funds through the state and federal government and other agencies as appropriate as we become aware of available funds. This would include, but does not limit to, funds for building renovations, water and sewer improvements, and rehabilitation, drainage improvements, infrastructure improvements for fundies for additional employees and equipment.
Motion to approve?
Shall move. Second?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Gail is not here tonight, so I'll do part of the finance report. Sales tax for the month of November is actually up about seventeen and a half percent, so that was a good month. Right now, I think we're trending about thirteen-point-eight percent up for the year. She also has two budget amendments, or one budget amendment, budget amendment number five, which is a ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-five-dollar capital improvement that comes out of the fund balance, and that was for Fire Department radios, and a thirty-thousand-seven-hundred-dollar capital improvement, which was for the pool decking that we're replacing, or actually refinishing.
Here, motion for approval of budget amendment number five.
Shall move.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And with that being said, the Clinton Community Center Indoor Pool will be closed February seventh through approximately February twenty-fifth, and this will be so we can work on the decking of the pool, the deck, and the deck of the locker rooms, also some other cosmetic improvements. It's been twenty-four years since we did any of that, so we'll shut it down and actually work on it probably for those three weeks, probably actually even drain the pool, scrub it, do some cleaning, and really needs to be done at least every ten years, and it's been every bit of that since we did the pool, inside the pool.
Any other questions for Roger?
Roger, can you hit on a couple of these points? I'm just kind of looking as far as what I've, I get questions about, and, and kind of bring us up to date, and maybe the reason why on some of these things. The, the market and main traffic signal, I get more complaints about that, and Zach, you probably get some of that, too, it's just, it just doesn't catch the, is there any way we can put the cameras up and do a different option on that, just to, I sat there ten minutes over the weekend, I really wanted to run it, but I didn't.
They've actually, through the signalization study...
Yeah, come to market and turn it on main, yeah.
They've actually, through the signalization study, claimed that they, they set it to allow the through traffic on main to flow better.
They did a dang good job.
It probably does to be, it needs to be adjusted. It, it, it probably does need to be adjusted again, because it does.
Rocket top rolling.
It, it, it'll keep you on market way too long.
Yes.
Is that something we do, or is that something you call and ask somebody to do, or state to it?
Our...
Vehicle call, do that.
Contractors.
Is it, is it much, is it, is it much more costly if we go to the, to more of the...
Radar.
The radar type, because it seems like, like, you know, Clinton and Maine is, is, I mean, I won't say always, but it's, it's pretty good, it's really good, but to, just to have that, those mounted more on the poles versus...
But, does it take the box over on the side, got to be able to be changed, too?
There, there is more expense than the radar, it is, it is a better system. Also, we have applied for a second round of funding through the CMAC, which is the congestion mitigation air quality, and if we're successful in doing that, we hope to be able to replace all of our signal equipment in the cabinets, controllers, detection, things like that, so we're aware of what you're speaking of, and the timing, the timing was programmed based on the overall first CMAC project to keep traffic flowing, which it's doing that, but it may need, it does need a little adjustment.
But it still has, at the same time, it still has some type of sensor, doesn't it? When cars pull up and there's...
Yes, but, but the timing overrides the sensor.
So, the timing is set, and anytime after the timing, then that's when the sensor kicks in?
Yeah, the sensor will, will pick up the vehicle, but depending on where it's at in the cycle of the program, is how long it sits there.
And you can't, is it one set time, all twenty-four hours, or can you change that?
No, it's, it's, there's three different timing patterns per day.
Okay.
You've got an AM peak time, off-peak time, and you've got a afternoon peak time, so there's different timing patterns for different hours of the day.
I would just ask if we can look into that and make some improvements at that intersection.
And speaking of traffic, as we're, as you come off the bridge and you're heading northbound...
Yeah.
I've literally witnessed this weekend, someone sitting in the right lane, and they just kind of veer to that left lane.
It happened to me.
Yeah.
I think it's happened so...
T-Dot?
Yeah, we, well, we, we've requested several times from T-Dot and Blade Lock to add additional striping.
Etching.
Yeah, and, and they have promised us they would. First, they came back and said they needed to do the, the etching, yeah, the grooving of the bridge, which they did a week, about a week ago. I talked to Lynn right before the meeting, because I figured it would come up. He said they're waiting now to get, get a little warmer weather to do the thermal, thermal painting down, and of course, the big thing is to do the main intersection, they'll have to get a time of the day that they can actually shut enough of it down, and they're having trouble doing that, but yes, we've asked them to, to, to put some dotted lines, whatever, in all directions, some arrows, because we've had, as you said, if you're going from Clinton across the bridge into South Clinton, I've seen it happen several times, if you're coming from South Clinton into Clinton, especially turning left going to Oak Ridge, I've seen the same thing, people get pushed up over towards Burger King, I've actually seen it the other way, which is, really hasn't changed, people coming from Oak Ridge, turning left on to main, same thing happened, people get pushed over towards Rusty Wallace, so we've asked for some improved marking there, and they, they promised that they would get us some as soon as they could.
But the biggest issue is the cold weather, right?
Cold weather.
Yeah. One other thing I had, too, if you can explain a little bit, there's, Facebook gets, was very active in regards to speed hops. Can you talk a little bit about the intention and the action, and what we're moving forward, why we're doing what we're doing?
Well, number one reason we put them in, in the two neighborhoods that we're trying them over the last probably four or five years, has been the constant complaint of those residents, those neighborhoods, of those streets being cut through streets and speeders. So, this was one device, we actually did a traffic study in both of them, and this was one of about three or four different devices they recommended you could use to slow traffic down. And though in the Eagle Bend area, there actually have been a couple petitions brought to us by individuals up there, by, by the neighborhood, so these were two of the more easily installed, reasonably cost type devices that we could put in. They're not permanent, we could be, they could be removed if we decide we don't want them, but, but we wanted to put two on River Bend Riverside and two on Eagle Bend, leave them down for six, eight months, see how they work. The feedback so far that I've got from the neighborhoods actually have been positive, people that live in the neighborhoods. It does slow traffic down, I mean, you have to slow down and go over them at a decent speed, and it's kind of been the intent of them.
We have appropriate signage, I'm assuming.
Yeah, they have, have approached signage coming to them, yes.
Any feedback from Eagle Bend?
They just seem to slow down and then go fast again, but I guess it's better than nothing.
I'm not a fan.
I think, I think it's, I think it's split. Now, one thing that I don't think Roger mentioned, that, I mean, I think we're still on the, in the infant stage of this, but Farragut, when they have something like that, they'll put it to a vote on those roads that are affected, and it's seventy percent of the household would say yes, then they'll put them in, not, they'll take them out.
Yeah, probably.
And maybe do something, if we go that far, if we want to do something like that...
Like a petition?
I think it's more of just a polling, just to, just to say, hey, what's yea or nay, you know? But, and there's some, probably some areas where you can't put them, I'm sure on hills or...
And any area that we do, we'd have to have the traffic engineer look at it, because there's hills, blind curbs, and those areas that you couldn't put them, and there's other devices, kind of like the, the table that we've got out here in front of the middle school, the curb that you put in the middle of the road that narrows the lane down to slow traffic down, that's another device that you can put in, quite a bit more expensive, but that's another option.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them in the West Hills community, and I think I've called air on a couple.
Okay, thank you for them, for those updates. No ordinance before us, adoption of resolutions, we have resolution number eight sixteen, the Anderson County Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Roger, you want to say a couple words for that, about this?
It's just the Hazard of Mitigation Plan that's with, through the Anderson County Emergency Management that we do annually, and it's just something required by FEMA.
Yeah, we do it on an annual basis.
Shall move. Second?
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any old business before us? Any new business?
Yes, Mayor, if I might, tonight, I think illustrates a... Yes, uh, Mayor, if I might, tonight I think illustrates a, a, a perfect example of what I think we need more of is communication and knowledge. I asked Bill a question, he answered. I was under the wrong impression, he straightened me out. And so that's good, because now I know, and now I can correct others that are operating under a false assumption. Not a, um, an assumption from a, from malice, but just a false one, because they had bad information. So there's been a lot, if this, if you in the city, if you're watching this, you didn't know, Historic Commission has proposed some new historic review guidelines. What is that? Well, they're guidelines to let people know that want to do business in Historic, what is going to be approved or not approved. Currently, um, I was told it was six, I went on the website today, it looked like three, they have three pages. Um, so Historic put together, in conjunction with seeking best planning or best thinking from East Tennessee Development, Jonathan Mosley, uh, there are sixty-some-odd pages now. Uh, that is going in front of Planning Commission, and Planning Commission is going to decide whether to adopt that up, down, good, bad. Now, I asked Todd Morgan, you may ask, who is Todd Morgan? Todd Morgan worked for the City of Moorestown before he went to run Knox Heritage for several years. He did such a good job that the City of Chattanooga whisked him away down there. Before that, he was the head of Main Street in the State of Tennessee. Todd is an expert, if you want, uh, when it comes to matters of preservation and Historic. So I reached out to him, and I told him what, where we were coming from, and he suggested that we do a workshop with city staff, with a person from the commi, uh, Historic, somebody from planning, and communicate, and we get a, just a, a good idea of whose job is what. Because right now, there seems to be an abundant confusion about whose responsibilities are, and I think Mayor's spoken to this, that there, that from his perspective, Historic's getting out of their lane a little bit into some things that, that probably fall under what John Householder should be doing, so on and so forth, but I think, at the end of the day, everybody's got the same goal, which is, we want what's best for Clinton. And the, why it matters is we need a balance of preservation that also embraces economic development, because you can go too far one way, to where you're, you know, down in Charleston, they can't even change a window, right? Or you can go so far the other way that you lose all of your historic character that makes your city what it is. So there, there's a right balance there, and the, I think the, the point was made that we're increasing complexity. More pages does not equal complexity. Um, to give you an idea, Jefferson City, they have ninety pages. The city that I want to fashion ourselves after, Franklin's got a hundred and forty-three. I mean, Harriman's got a hundred and thirty. So, you know, it depends on what's in those pages, I think is what's important, and that we take, take it out of five people's opinions of what constitutes as a historic, is this not? Now, now the developer doesn't know, they're at the whim of an opinion, as opposed to having a, a design guideline that results in a known outcome. I can know as a designer, as a developer, what they expect, and I'm not going to be at the whims of someone's opinion or interpretation, because I have really good guidelines that show me and tell me what's to be expected. And so I, I would love to have city staff, or the city manager, put together, and it's a volunteer workshop, if you want to come, come, if you don't, don't. But that way, we can get together and, and come about, um, understanding where each of these different parties are coming from, and that, that, that Planning Commission could understand the, the, the historic guidelines, what are we trying to accomplish? And, and it needs to have a clear sort of leader, and it doesn't need to get to be a, um, this is a place of, of information and understanding, not of drawing lines in the sand, your side, my side, you know, this is good, this bad, and that, I think it's important, um, because what I've witnessed over the last eighteen months is just parties talking right past one another. Uh, and, and these are people in parties that have the best intentions, and that I think are very honorable. So that's, that's my, and I know I'm rambling a bit, but I think when we listen to each other, sometimes people can surprise you.
Well said. Anything else?
Well, one, and I agree with Zach wholeheartedly, which one thing, and I think will help with all of this, and I just text Angela to find out exactly when. I think we're interviewing for the planner position within the next two weeks, and I think when we get a full-time planner hired that will work both with Historic Zoning, Planning Commission, and that'll be a full-time city staff person, it will, will help in this communication tremendously.
But I mean, is that something that we need to vote on, or is that something that you want to vote on, or has Roger, in his own purview, can put that together?
Yeah, I think Roger can put together a workshop about that.
Yeah, I think you need to wait, though. If you were, if you were to get a planner, I mean, that's somebody that would be on board the next two or three months, is that your goal?
I, I hope in the next month, I thi, I think, I think Angela told me yesterday that she was trying to get interviews set up for two weeks, so we've, and I know we've had six or seven apply.
And basically, right now, we have Joe Barrett, is that right?
We have Joe Barrett.
But he's, but he's an advisor.
Yeah.
And it's not like he has boots on the ground here every single day.
No, he comes by-
He does when you, when you call, or when you seek advice, or seek counsel, or?
Well, he comes out a week before Planning Commission and picks up the information, stays a couple hours, then we see him the day of Planning Commission at afternoon, so unless we seek him out for advice, we don't have, have a planner on staff.
Yeah. And that person would fall under the, uh, guidance of?
Of the, he'd be in the building official, but he would be in the office instead of out in the field.
Gotcha.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
Please adjourn.